All right, great. Everyone ready to get started? Ready. And call this meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission to order today, Tuesday, August 5th. Make it a roll call, please.
Yes, ma'am. Chair Williams here. Vice Chair Bertow.
Present.
Commissioner Aragon.
Here.
Commissioner Anderson. Commissioner Gigiarelli, present. Commissioner Wood.
Here.
Commissioner Ayers.
Here.
Great, thanks. And if everyone would join for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and limited to all.
Thanks. Next action item, the consent agenda, the minutes of the July 22nd, 2025 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Did everyone have a chance to review those? Does anyone have any questions, comments? That I entertain a motion to approve those?
An approval of the July 22nd.
I'll second. Go ahead. I'll go second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Bertow, a second from Commissioner Aragon. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All righty. Any conflicts of interest this evening? Any agenda changes tonight?
We do not have any agenda changes.
Great. Well, we'll go ahead and get started then. The Western Slope Veterans Coalition and Flat Top's Cowboy Church Minor Subdivision Sketch Plan. This is a public notice action item. Welcome back, gentlemen. Nice to see you.
Thank you.
We'll start by turning it over to Director Centeno, then we'll ask her some questions, then we'll ask you some questions, then we'll open it up for public comment. Then we might ask some more questions and then we'll get to the action item. Nicole, do you want us to get us started?
Yes, ma'am.
Thanks.
Extremely long packets. It takes a while to get everyone's thing today. Okay, the Flat Tops Cowboy Church and Western Slope Veterans Coalition have submitted applications for a minor subdivision sketch plan and PUD. Though the minor subdivision sketch plan needs to be approved before we jump into, the PUD will be at the same time, but two different applications. So for the sake of everything tonight, we just merged everything together and it's going to be one approval, but there's two different entities involved in the application process. This is not accurate anymore. Did you have the square footages or the acreage of the new? So the staff report was released and then there was a little bit of a variation change for the overall site plan. So some of the numbers in the staff report are not going to be accurate because the acreage changed. So the Western Slope Veterans Coalition, if the parcel is approved to be subdivided, will be.
It's eighty-nine thousand nine eighty-six.
Clear feet. Okay. And that's okay. So there will be a little bit of a variation. This is just sketch plan, so it's very concept and preliminary. But just to let you know that those numbers that are in the staff report and the agenda item summary are actually not going to be accurate with what is final. It's from six. Two point zero six. So it changed just a little bit. It's still going to meet the requirement for subdivision of two acre parcels. The church project is including a four thousand four hundred square foot sanctuary addition and then the adjacent parcel that would be subdivided is going to be part of the Western Slope Veterans Coalition, which are proposing two, twenty-two multifamily units, which ends up being eleven duplex buildings, three single-family units, one of which is the larger manager's unit, and then one community building. So as we just went through a quick introduction, I feel like it's important to talk about the background of the Veterans Coalition. They have been in front of the planning commission before with a different location that did not suit their project the way that it needed to with the access and the density in a landlocked location that only had access through an alleyway. The town is very much so in support of their cause and what they're doing, but we needed to find a better location. So when the town was approached by the Flat Tops Cowboy Church about subdividing their parcel, we were looking at the ability to subdivide and looking at the access off of Home Avenue, which is a legal street access and thought that maybe there would be an ability for them to partner and figure something out together. We made an introduction and then sure enough, that led to where we are today. And so this is a much better location and suits the needs of both the church wanting to subdivide the parcel as well as the Veterans Coalition wanting to put in, or to create a project that will support veterans in our area. Give them a helping hand up. So the location is at the Flat Tops Cowboy Church, which is over on the corner of First and Home, which is pictured in the, on the screen now. The parcel will be subdivided from north to south. And the zoning is currently in R2 Zone District. The church is functioning off of a special use permit, which is why they were allowed to have a church in a residential zone district. The new subdivided portion would end up being a planned unit development because it doesn't fit within the realm of any of our zone districts and there's density that's not out of the realm of what we're trying to create, but it's going to be an individual owner that has multiple housing units on one parcel and that's not defined as being allowed in any of our zone districts that we currently have in our plan, in our code. The, I did put the minor subdivision sketch code requirements within the staff report. The Planning and Zoning Commission will be a final decision-making body on the sketch plan. But given the, just like the Main Street Plaza, that there's so much that's going to go into this and it's it's more than just a typical minor subdivision. The applicant is going to take the sketch plan in front of the Board of Trustees as well to get feedback from them before they just come to them for a final plot because the minor subdivision allows the preliminary step to be expedited, so it just goes from sketch to final. So it would be beneficial for the applicant to get feedback from the board before they just go in front of them with a final plan. Let's see, the comprehensive plan deems this, excuse me, neighborhood residential and part of the comp plan talks about having the neighborhood residential higher density. This fits within the realm of what staff interprets the comp plan to to be indicating that would be beneficial within this area. You did put more information in there on that. The conceptual plan is what actually changed, just the property line really changed. But this is still a pretty good indication of what is being proposed, that the property line. I will switch over to this one just to show you. The proposed property line before ran across, it was impeding their ability, the church's ability to have a little bit of extra space with their walkout patio. So the newly proposed property line is, it jogs and devates and around the church building, so the church building has a little bit more space.
Are we going to see the church in a separate time for their patio or at all?
There, yeah. So the subdivision will happen first and then we'll zone, within the subdivision, we'll zone the second parcel. And then both entities will come back separately for their own site plan reviews. And then that's when you'll get a little bit more of an idea and better say on exactly what is taking place, what the square footages are, what the, I mean, that's, that will be the final step before building permit.
Parking will also be an issue or question?
A quite, yeah. So parking would be addressed at the time of site plan review.
Very good.
Making sure that, that it meets all those requirements, yes. So the, this is the existing church. If you can see my mouse moving, the addition would be to the west side of the church and then we would have the subdivision and then this is where the Western Slope Veterans Coalition would have their multi-unit development. And at the time of site plan is when we'll go deeper into the details. And if you were a commissioner at the time that the original application came in, you got a pretty good idea of what that was going to entail, the application process, the requirements and more information on their operating plan essentially. And so we'll get into that more at the time of site plan review. So right now, this is, we're trying to give you a bigger picture of the concept, but this is a sketch plan for minor subdivision. Oh, let me get back to the packet. So overall, staff finds that the sketch plan proposal aligns with the town's governing documents in that it's a viable start to taking this project to fruition. We do recommend a, an approval from the Planning Commission for the Flat Tops Church and Western Slope Veterans Coalition Minor Subdivision Sketch Plan with the following conditions. And some of these are the generic ones that we add to all of them, that all representations made are going to be accurate, that the applicant provides additional requested documents and pays all related fees, that the applicant develops and receives approval for all necessary governing agreements. Part of that is going to be at the time of final plot, there will have to be a subdivision improvement agreement. And so there's going to be agreements that go to the Board of Trustees. Number four is that all referral agency comments are addressed, which the applicant's been extremely quick on getting us anything that we need and they've actually gone above and beyond and completed steps in the process that we haven't even come to yet, such as a traffic study and making sure that they're staying on top of any documents that are going to be needed in the future. And then number five is that each tract of development requires a site plan review. And then number six is that this approval is not for construction. There is a recommended motion and their whole application was added to the staff report for review. If any of you got a chance to look over that and come up with any questions that you may have. Otherwise, I'm happy to answer any, any question that you may have and then see if the applicant has anything to add.
Great. Thank you so much for that background.
Yeah.
Especially having a couple of new commissioners, getting them a little bit up to speed on just our journey so far. Does anyone have any questions for Nicole before we turn it over to our applicants?
A question, Nicole, here. It says, I'm looking at the existing utility quarter right there with the water services. Are they just typical one-inch service lines? Because it looks like they dead-end. I don't see anything going through and connecting on the other side of this little parcel.
I could address that if you'd like.
Uh, yes, go ahead.
Can I put it on the screen?
Yes. Or is, which one were you looking at?
Twenty-six of one fifty-eight.
Okay.
Short answer is those sewer water main that runs through the parcel at Eastwood feeds a subdivision to the north of this. So it does continue through. And right now, we have just designed those as three-quarter inch water services and four-inch sewer services to each unit. They will tie into those mains that run north-south.
What is the main? Because I don't see the main.
So the mains run north-south through that quarter.
Understood. What size is it? Is it eight inch?
Well, if she'll let me pull her up, I can.
I see the sand's eight inch, but I couldn't find that.
Okay. You should be able to.
So, let's see, sure.
And, and this is some, Derek hasn't, he gave some feedback, but the engineering feedback as far as the utilities will come at the next step of the process.
Yeah, I would just, and everything like that, you know, because I know usually like the town, you know, the builder and everything developer will take it from.
Yeah.
Or these to the main, to each of the units and responsible for that cost and stuff like that. But I just want to make sure that you know, there's, there's not a whole bunch associated with the upgrades and everything else for this. No, I don't. Correct. And it feeds the other subdivision. I'm sure there's, there's some looping and everything like that. Just curious.
Yeah.
Knows that's crazy.
So sewers, A, B, C, there's inwards and room elevation there. We've got plenty of fall. There's water sewer and irrigation in that quarter feeds a subdivision behind. Soap versus doing the engineering on this project.
Okay.
And then we'll just tie the individual taps into those main lines. So they, they looked at capacity and stuff already. So we're actually ninety percent done with construction drawings right now.
Nice.
Hope that answers the question.
Does that ditch have any flood potential? There's a ditch running right through there.
There, yeah, there's a, it's part of the hundred-year flood drainage, but they did have a full drainage study done. Good. And part of that drainage study includes all of the requirements and, and our engineer did look at that to make sure that it was.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So I can show you that if you'd like to see it on the screen.
Sure.
So we actually did a full drainage analysis and you can see we went all the way back to the hogback. So these are the different drainages that we researched and we came up with. Yeah.
To me, it looked like a lot of them were going to end up on your property.
So it does. Now that, talk about technology.
And I don't know that.
There we go. So it's not a flood plain. It's not under payment jurisdiction. It's just a drainage.
Okay.
But with that drainage study, our engineers determined the base flood elevation because essentially we still have to deal with that runoff water, right? So this is where hundred-year flood plain comes into effect. It comes down the middle between the two parcels. And the top back and curb along Home Avenue actually acts as a weirder and that's what kind of determines that flood elevation, that it runs into the city streets and whatever stormwater system we have. So all that means to us is we need to make sure our finished floors, our buildings are above that base flood elevation, which actually works pretty well since we're in that landscape area. The church addition will protrude out into that area, but what we have to do is make sure we backfill around, keep the finished floor elevations above that or excess above that. So we've, we've taken that into account with our design.
Thank you.
Good question, though.
Thank you.
That's a tough one on that side.
Yes, it just looks at when you drive by.
Yeah.
You can see it.
Yeah, I was curious about that too, especially with that overlap onto the parking area. Like if that gets paved, there's a lot of, it looks like existing mature trees there. If any of those require removal for development, if any of that's going to exacerbate some of like the pooling that might happen there and then also the entryway, like if that's going to come out to the street, if our system can maintain that inflow.
So the short answer is you'll get the same amount of water you always did. Now, we may fill in that channel, that drainage channel, which we're allowed to do. Same water goes through there, just doesn't pool as much before it runs through. It may just run straight through, right? So we have no storage capacity, which we're required to for the flood elevation. So as far as the parking lots go, they're built up. This is a new proposed parking lot for the, for the church and this is the one for the veterans. They're both high enough, they're, they're at or above the base flood elevation, but even if they get some water in, it's really kind of hurt. I'm more concerned about it. We've taken into account for the, for the church addition, obviously, that's going to have a basement, solid walls, entrances on the side above the base flood elevation. And I can say all those are elm trees. I think Pastor Jeff is here tonight. I think the intent is they all go away and new landscaping will occur on the entire site. And just real quick, part of what we got to looking at after we got into further into the construction documents is that property line that you're running through the middle kind of crowded out the, the church addition. It seemed to make more sense for them to have control over what, just for setback, but for the landscaping around that building. So we just moved the property line to the back of the curb on the veterans project. Just seemed to be a lot cleaner way to deal with that. Still over two acres from both parcels. And then the church kind of has more control over what happens around their building.
I got another question for you, John, just in development of this. Just looking at it, I know we had some issues when you guys were down here off of, what is it, Ninth Street? But as far as secondary entrance, we case that stair will be utilized. I see you got one, one-way in and basically just dead ends on the the upper end.
Correct. We have a hammerhead turnaround for emergency vehicles. We were not able to get access out of the parcel for a second entrance, but we've reviewed this with Orin Moon and he's, he's acceptable with the design.
Yeah, I'm just always concerned about that.
Yeah, that's a tough one.
So just to quickly review that, I don't have anything else. As far as, it already looks pretty, I like this location.
Yeah, it's a great location. And just an emergency service access, you can see, and we'll get into the PUD, the details of, of the design. But we've got good access points between, you know, paved walkways, so they got good access for emergency services in there as well.
And when you fully develop plants, I know another big concern was the lighting, you know, just, just right being around the neighborhood.
All down.
That, yeah, just wanted to make sure we don't kind of flood the area.
So we didn't get a chance, but introductions, this is David Rosenfeld. He's our architect and pastor Jeff is obviously in the room, but we, we've taken all that into account, all down, down lining. We've actually got a concept landscape plan. We'll probably go ahead and get a full-on landscape plan at some point, but obviously the way David's designed these is all the doors either face south or east away from the neighborhood behind. So we're, we're on that screening and keeping, you know, the.
Exactly. And because, you know, the intent was if you don't have, obviously, a bunch of homes just kind of backed up to the other neighborhood behind you. So I think the, the idea here was in terms of having the, the homes kind of, it looks more like a village essentially. So the idea is that it's not, you know, it doesn't feel like barracks. And that, that was really the idea is to make it feel softer, make it feel like more like a village. You have more of these gathering spaces in between each of the units. So really feel like that, that creates, it still has enough, enough density to serve the purpose that we're, that we're looking for. But you also just have a lot more open space and you're not staring into each other's windows and each other's front doors and I think once we get into the lighting as well, I think the fact that you don't have, like, like John is saying, all these front doors lined up in, in any one direction. I think that will start to diffuse the lighting as well. And then on top of that, we'll have the dark sky compliant lighting as well.
And I can say, we did have a public meeting and we didn't invite just the people within two hundred feet. We invited like the entire west side of Silt. We had fifteen or twenty people show up, only two with any concerns. One was a neighbor right in the middle, right behind, just she knew there was a utility easement, ran through her property, wanted to make sure we weren't going to tear down her fence, work in her yard. You showed her all the utilities were on the other side, nothing there. So she was fine. And then later just didn't want to see any development, but at the end of the day, she was fine with it and she was worth the brunt of it. She was more concerned about the, the road access on the Highway Six with the development down the street than, than ours. So really overall, we didn't have any issues with any neighbors. Nobody's coming to us. We actually set up a website, siltvetershousing.com. It's had quite a few hits, but we've had zero negative feedback. It's been really, really nice. It's a good location. And Flat Tops Cowboy Church has been a fantastic partner working with us and and obviously, you know, their intent is to get their, their addition, the, the parking lot completed. And so it's a win for everybody, really.
Great.
Nicole, will you run through the zoning and because essentially what I think I heard you when you were explaining earlier is that this isn't really zoned for what we're doing here, but by creating the PUD and the minor sub, going that route does allow this. And so I'm just trying to get how we get from one take to the other.
Yeah, so within our residential zoning, we have different densities. So when R1 is less dense and R2 is medium density and then R3 is high density. But within our code, every individual lot is allowed to have one primary structure. And so unless they were to come through and subdivide or condominiumize all of these, which to be the purpose of what they're trying to do with one entity managing all the units for the helping hand up for the veterans. We, to have more than one primary structure on one single parcel, it would take an approval outside of our zoning, which is where the PUD comes in. And so that's, that's primarily what we're trying to accomplish with the PUD is to allow more than one primary structure on the property itself. So we just don't have that covered because the goal of the zoning with the residential is only to have one primary structure per parcel. And then with the allowance of an ADU, which is a secondary use. So that's where the PUD comes into place is just to try to help with the zoning of something that's outside of the realm of what we would allow anywhere else.
And because it's not a PUD, it has extra checks than it normally would. I mean, I guess that's, why wouldn't anyone just do that? Why wouldn't that just be the way forward? I guess, I guess where I'm just at, and forgive me, God, I'm just doing, because I actually love this idea. I love what you're doing. But I, I guess where my concern lies is what doors does this open up for future developers trying to do something when we've got certain zoning set up and they've now found a back door that we've already approved and settled with?
Yeah, so the PUD process, we have a lot of PUDs in town. And so the PUD process is there just for this very reason. It, it creates a space for somebody to do something outside of the norm, but they have to go through the approval process. And it doesn't mean that they're going to get approved.
Right.
But it means that they, they have the opportunity to go through the process and request something different than what's normal. And so that's the goal of a planned unit development is just so that there's an additional option for zoning that is not within the cookie cutter box of what we've set for residential or commercial zoning.
And then it gets looked at a little more detail. But this commission and Board of Trustees.
So.
On a case, a case basis.
Yeah, so anytime somebody applies for a PUD, it's, they're essentially applying for zoning. So whether it was a PUD or straight across the zoning that fits within, like Go Rentals did, then it will come back in front of the planning commission for a PUD approval. We're not, it's not for approval. It's going to be a recommendation because of, yeah, the zoning doesn't ordinance. So it's a two reading in front of the board and then a recommendation from the trustees. And so we'll bring the PUD document back to the, back to the commission for review and then it goes to the trustees for a double ordinance reading. So you'll get more information on that when we get to that PUD zoning portion of it. But there, it's a lot. I mean, it's a just like you saw, there's just limited PUD. There's going to be very detailed information in there that, that we'll bring back and then you'll have an, you'll have an ability to weigh in on it and say, well, hold on, I don't like that piece of it, or this is all going to fit within the realm of, because that's the big thing with the PUD, like what we had talked about, I think it was the last meeting, is we can't get too deep into the weeds at sketch plan because the overlining zoning is the fail-safe. And so if you're okay with what you're zoning over there, it doesn't matter if this development were to do it or the next development were to come in to do it, what you're allowing for density and zoning over there is what is acceptable. So that's the fail-safe if somebody were to not develop something and you're establishing zoning or for an annexation. You're establishing zoning that you would be comfortable with regardless of who was developing it and for what, that whatever they develop has to fit within that zoning. So that's what the PUD would be is when it comes back in front of you, it'll have specific information. It'll have building heights and all, like everything that we cover in our zoning code will be covered in that PUD. And so if you can look at all that and say, okay, we're okay with that building height, we're okay with this density, we're okay with, within this two-acre parcel, we're okay with all these things happening, that's when you would approve the PUD for zoning. So it is a step process. It's not just an implicit, okay, they want to be, be, they want to create a PUD, it's approved.
Well, that's how I understood it, but I guess I needed a little more thoroughly explained than you did that in some, so thank you.
Yeah, yeah, it's good to, I mean, it's good to clarify, especially in public meetings, to make sure that everybody understands what it is in the process.
Yeah, thanks for that, Director.
It's important to remember too, that we still comply with the comprehensive, the intent of the comprehensive plan and generally the density. In this case, I do a lot of these subdivisions, probably half a dozen a year, probably seventy-five, eighty percent of our PUDs. And all that does is allow me to write the PUD guide to say, hey, our project doesn't fit a hundred percent within the box of your fine juice code, which rarely happens anymore because all easy stuff's built. And it allows us to do a PUD guide that says, here's where it doesn't. In this case, it's ownership. It's just, you guys never had to deal with that before, so it's not in your code. So we can just say, hey, it's one owner for all the properties. They're going to manage it forever. Another one is we can look at setbacks, building heights, but we spell that out clearly so you can see when it comes in front of you that here's what's different than like major subdivision saying, but the overall density and the comp plan is still, still there.
Thanks. Nice questions. Yeah. I had a couple of questions, but I wanted to make sure that everybody set an opportunity to go.
No, I don't have any questions, but I'm excited to see this project come back and that you have a good partner now. I'm doing work.
Thank you. We're excited too.
I echo Commissioner Wood's comments. Yeah, I'm really thrilled to see you all back before us here. I know it was tough, you know, when we had the other parcel and so.
That's okay.
Yeah.
Whatever.
I'm, I'm thrilled. I'm tickled, Nicole, that you guys were able, the town was able to work with you, the applicant and the cowboy church and just for this all to culminate in a really nice looking application here, really nice job. Thanks for going above and beyond too, with some of the things that you knew that we would probably be asking about the traffic impact study and drainage and all those sorts of. Uh drainage and all those sorts of things that you don't have to have quite yet, so really appreciate you guys being on top of the ball with that. Um I know in prior conversations, you know, we did talk about the location of Silt in general for this project and. Um kind of some of the positives and negatives that might be associated with that. And one of the things that always kind of stuck with me is, you know, Silt is so small that sometimes like the access to. Like healthcare services or any of the other services that I know that you had mentioned in, you know, earlier iterations of this that. Um your residents are going to be like seeking out and kind of needing, and does Silt really have the capacity to accommodate that? I'm curious if there is like, if you might be able to elaborate or speak to any of like the resources and services that their residents are gonna be providing and like how. Um Silt is like a good complement for that.
Sure, um obviously, services are up all over the valley, right, housing is tough, you know, finding available real estate can build these on this top, so. Um Silt on one hand is is a good location because it's centrally located in Garfield County. Now, we intend to, you know, if there's room and somebody Eagle County or Picken County needs a service, I would see where to take them, but. Intent is, you know, Western Silt Veterans Coalition is based in kind of serves the the citizens here, so Silt's good for that. We do have a pretty good healthcare facility here in town with, you know, the clinic out here. A lot of these guys, of course, are gonna go to V A in Grand Junction, so it doesn't matter where we really build it in the valley, they're gonna have to go to Grand Junction. Um V A does have a van that will uh run periodic times, and they kind of work with. Certain days of the week, they come up valley and pick up people, take them back. We're going to put an extra space in the community building for. Um V A counselors to come to the site, um they've already, we've talked to them, and yeah, they said, yeah, build it, we'll we'll figure it out, we'll get a schedule, and. So they'll actually gonna come to the site. Uh as far as grocery stores, obviously, that's the challenge here locally, they've got, you know, the dollar stores and stuff, but. That's something that the Veterans Coalition is gonna have to just kind of work out, see how they how they move along, they've got a lot of volunteers. Um their thought is maybe they just have a vehicle, they just say, hey, we're gonna take three people on this day, or whatever it may be, and. That's that's probably the biggest challenge is getting them to other towns. Most of these people, you'd be surprised. Our housing market is just priced these veterans out of a place to live. They have disability, they have social security, but it's, you know, twenty five hundred dollars a month. So they're they're had a home, but now they're living in their cars because they can't afford to live here. So with this program, you know, obviously, the Veterans Coalition is a nonprofit. But working through the Garfield County Housing Authority and the V A. Um they look at each applicant individually, and they subsidize the rent based on their income, so term of face income, that still leaves them enough that they can. You know, have groceries and gas, so many of them will have a car. So it's not gonna be that big of an issue, whereas there'll be a few that don't. Maybe, we just don't know.
So is the idea that there'll be like market rate apartments that they'll be partially subsidized by like the V A and? Or is it already like classified as?
So they're not profit, but the trick is, once we get it built, once we get approved and we know what our costs are, they have to charge enough rent to to cover their costs and stay operating, right? So that's all they're gonna worry about is operating costs, you know, plus a little cushion, um regardless of what market is. And then obviously, the, you know, I have to work with the Housing Authority and the the V A to figure out what that buffer is and what the amount is, but. Yeah, they they're already having those conversations, but the problem with the government is you pretty much have to. Say, here's what we have, what will you do, and. Have to be ready to to do it. And the good news is we're you're getting some, you know, bills coming and even signed lately that's gonna. Bring up some money at the federal level for this type of housing, so hopefully that helps get it built quicker.
And so the anticipation is it will be um folks residing in like the western part of Garfield County already?
A lot of them are. A lot of them are, um there's a lot of people um just getting bored of, you know, where they're living, where they're maxed out, they have no money left for groceries. So if they have a place they could live and get subsidized, maybe they'll end up with an extra four hundred bucks a month, they can. You know, buy gas and groceries. It's it's a tough economy here, you know, so. And and the other thing is this, you know, people are discharged or individual gives them a place to live while they're trying to get on their feet. And they and the 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 hope is a majority of this is used for. Their veterans to kind of get stable and put a little money away and figure out, you know, put some money on the house or whatever it is, and. Be able to work and not have to worry about. You know, where am I gonna live, all my paycheck go goes to rent.
So would you consider it like? I don't wanna call it transitional housing, but like is the ultimate goal to get them to like a self suffici- sufficiency that they could?
That's our primary goal, is it was like transition housing, give everybody a place to live while they can figure out where they're gonna live and maybe put some money away. But you're probably gonna have some people like, you know, on face incomes that early that may need to live here a while, so we don't wanna limit that either, so if they're gonna leave it open. The hard part about the homeless and it's just veterans and people in need, especially, I won't say homeless, but people that are about to become homeless. They're proud, they're not gonna tell you, but they'll go to the Veteran Service Center and, you know, have coffee and tell stories. But they need a place to live, they will wanna hand out, they wanna hand up. Like those people are out there, and it's a real problem, so if we give them an option, then they they can have a place to live. You try to figure out what they're gonna do with that when they get their cars.
Thanks.
It's a tough thing. Because it's a problem, that section of where our population gets overloaded.
Absolutely, and part of me asking this question is so that it gets recorded and then it gets in the minutes, and so that there's a narrative about why this is needed and. Um so yeah, like I know that you've mentioned, like we've had this conversation a couple of times, but I just wanna make sure that like people are reminded about like. Where we're at and kind of how far we've come with this.
I appreciate that.
I have a question, so the engineers didn't want you guys to have an exit on Home Avenue.
No, there is an exit on Home Avenue here.
So does that mean then that there's two, so that's the main way out and then?
So it comes out on Home Avenue, down to First Street.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought the far right was where it led out.
This up here is just a hammerhead turn. It has to be a certain size. And we've been working with the word moon to make sure he's happy with the size and the turnaround and excess of all that kind of stuff.
And then the removal of the elm trees.
You want some?
Well, so so will you clarify, are those considered like an invasive species in town very much though, right, and so? Um I have a huge seedless cottonwood in my yard that I refuse to take out, and I know that um probably a lot of the neighbors over there looking at those huge trees, you know. You just kind of have an attachment towards them, but recognizing that there is.
So this isn't the landscape plan, but the concept is the same, that maybe we don't have four trees, maybe we have one or two here, but this is kind of what we're looking at, is we want. You know, a lot of trees, so. There's a nice field, it's a nice buffer on this side, we want some trees, this. This will be kind of a park open space between the two properties when we're done, it's gonna be pretty nice, actually. So we'll we will plant some nice decorative trees.
So the idea is like that those trees like need to be mitigated anyways. With a replacement plan, yeah, with, yeah, and I know that we do have like a list of whatever the the. Ones we promote, that we want to raise, yeah.
And and that's the landscape architects, the last piece that we're working on, we're actually giving proposals now for, but we didn't think that was high on our priority list at the moment, but.
All right, those are all the questions that I have, uh. I think probably time to turn it over to public hearing, open it up for public comment. All right, so the procedures for the public comment are over here to my right, your left out there. Where are we at, number four, so um I'll open the public hearing. We'll have you guys um vacate your seats to the back if anyone wants to come to the front and speak, um name and address. We say three minutes, we don't keep a timer, so uh just try to keep it around that amount of time. Uh after that, the public hearing will be closed, or you guys can respond to any comments made in the public hearing, but then after that, we'll close it. We'll chat for a few more minutes, and then we'll make our recommended motions. So at seven oh eight, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. And is anyone uh here present wanting to wishing to make any comments this evening? Yeah, yeah. Come on up. We'll have you sit right here, right in front. Yeah, thank you so much for coming out.
Yeah, they're broken hips, so. Um I've been real pleased with this because of what could have gone in there. So I'm very happy that this is something that we need, very much so. Um I am a little worried about the water that goes through there, that ditch, and all of the wildlife that is associated with that, and I heard him say. Well, we can fill that in, it's like, please, don't. Isn't that, you know, I don't know, and it doesn't go onto the public streets, it's got that.
Culver.
Yeah, goes underneath the street. So um that was one of my things that I I really think that water source is. Um beneficiary in our area for humidity and ground and birds and everything. And the other thing is that I'm the one that's up against it, I seem to be the only neighbor that cares. I worried, I sat, I've been sitting on my back porch looking. And and worrying about um the headlights, you know, just. Coming right at my house, right between the buildings. And I wondered about a fence, um you know, between the. The properties, a good, a good fence, so that I felt more protected from it and from the light. Cause I really like it, so that was just something I would like them to consider. Is putting up a a boundary fence on that.
Um would you mind stating your name and your address?
Brooke Caldwell, two ninety eight Birch Court.
Great, thank you so much, Brooke, thanks for coming down.
This isn't the last hearing, so you'll have a chance to come back. To address that issue.
I really appreciated the the letter that I got to let me know that this was coming, so thank you.
Great, thanks.
And just to be clear, when we say we're gonna re contour that, the the drainage will still remain, there'll just be landscaped ice and nicer trees. And then culvert is, I think it's only twenty four inch, it will still handle small flows. But the hundred year flows are are still gonna go over the back of the curb regardless, so. Yes, we're gonna fill around the new new addition, we're gonna re contour, kind of clean that up, but it it'll be nice, it'll still have a drainage when we're done.
Any other public comments, either in person or online tonight? We do not have a bit anybody online. Do you have any comments? All right, it's seven eleven, close the public hearing. And does anyone have any last comments that they'd like to make or questions for an accorded applicant?
I do not.
No?
Darren Williams, I move to approve, to recommend approval of the Flat Tops. Cowboy Church and Western Slope Veterans Coalition Minor Subdivision sketch plans with the findings and conditions. Listed in the staff report and spoken during this meeting.
Second that, all right, we have a motion from Commissioner Bertow. A second from Commissioner Gigi Reli, all those in favor? Any opposed? All right, passes unanimously then. Thank you, gentlemen. And John, if you wanna quit sharing.
Want me to do the rest of the meeting?
All right, now we'll move on to our next agenda item, the Holiday Inn Minor Subdivision Sketch Plan, this is also a public notice action item. And we'll turn it over to Director Santano to lead us through this one.
We are under contract, sorry, I'm trying to get to it, there's so many pages.
Say one twenty one?
Okay, we are under contract to sell the Holiday Inn parcel, um known as fifteen thirty five. River Frontage Road, the town currently owns the parcel, and we lease it out to an individually owned. Building, which is the Holiday Inn currently, and so when it transferred. Hands, Mr. Gotum, who purchased the Holiday Inn from. Um I think it was Salt Seventy LLC. Our lease transferred over, and we were able to continue the lease, the land lease, um or the. Uh building lease, no, it's a land lease, I'm sorry, the land lease for the building. But when he approached the town and said, we would really actually love to own the property itself. The town is not opposed to that, um the Board of Trustees. Agreed that it would be beneficial. Made it part of the contract to sell. But part of the condition of approval was that we would still wanna maintain. All of the river frontage property and trail system that's existing, and make sure that it was still open to the public, so. The it's a pretty open and closed subdivision, um it's, there's no development happening, it's just. Subdividing off the portion of the land that the trail system is on to the. East and to the south. Part of that, let's see if I can get to the plot here. Part of the subdivision is also going to entail, as we started. Having communications with the Riverview property to the west. We were looking at the C dot access plan, the C dot and Town of Sill access plan. And part of that is there has to be an interconnecting. Right of way that goes right between the two parcels, and so. In order for the Riverview property to be approved. These other access easements have to be solidified. And we just happen to be in this process already, and so we're just adding that as part of this replating. And subdivision is to subdivide off, um I don't know if you can see my mask moving, we'll subdivide off. This portion so that we have the trail access to the east. And then we will subdivide off, it's about, this is not super clear, but it's about um. About five feet from the property line. Or from the building line, that we will actually own all of this southern area and to the river. Whoa, what happened? So I apologize if that's super fuzzy, it wasn't fuzzy before it was binded. Um but this is an idea of the feedback, the handwritten feedback is from our attorneys. The yellow box feedback is from our engineer, so it's a little. This is a very, very preliminary, the um surveyor is working on getting everything implemented. But this is all that I had to put in the packet for tonight.
That's how it goes sometimes.
It's sometimes it is, yes. And and so the the engineer or the um surveyor is working on reestablishing everything. The Holiday Inn sign was actually. Impeding on the property to the north, so the town currently owns both properties, north and south, so it's fifteen thirty five. River Frontage, which is the Holiday Inn property, and then it's fifteen fifty five. For the other parcel, and that's the Astera parcel that we had sold. They didn't meet the requirements for development, so the town just purchased that back um within the last, within the last three months. That closed and the town is now the owner of that parcel again. And so now that we own both parcels, now's the time to clean up easements and get everything solidified before we sell anything off. So the Holiday Inn. Sign is actually on the property to the north, outside of the easement. So we're creating a little box easement around that to make sure that the Holiday Inn sign. Doesn't have to be moved in the future and that there's an easement around it, um regardless of what happens to the property to the north. We are going to reestablish, or not reestablish, we are going to initially establish. The fifteen foot easement on each side of the properties to satisfy the access control plan. And then we're gonna subdivide off the um trail system. The town is. The applicant for this, so town staff recommends approval, um at this point, we're. It doesn't misalign with the comprehensive plan or the uh. The basic. Um foundation of what's already existing, we're not changing anything, we're just ensuring that. Portions of the property remain open to the public and that we. Concede with the access control plan and make sure the sign can stay where it's at. Um so overall, staff finds that it's compliant. We've gone through the process, we will have, and the planning commission, just like the other minor subdivision. Will be a decision maker for the sketch plan, and then it'll go to the board for final decision, which is on the agenda within the next month. That uh and then the the surveyor is working on making sure that the the survey meets all of the. So the surveyor was actually a surveyor that was. so the surveyor was actually a surveyor that was found by Mr. Gotem. And so they're working on doing the survey stuff, but that's why we still had referral comments from our engineer and our, um, legal team. So we recommend approval and the conditions are that all representations made are accurate, that any requested documents be provided, that, um, the applicant makes any necessary changes and brings this to final plat. That referral comments are addressed and that this is not for construction. And there is a recommended motion. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have about the application itself or what it is that we're trying to subdivide.
Clear as mud. Thanks.
It is.
Does anyone have any questions for Nicole before I open it up for our probably non-existent public comment?
Yes, uh, not really directly affecting this project, this application. And it's the Holiday Inn, Mr. Gotem or whoever might be there after the sale. Are they interested in having a link between the Holiday Inn or trail of their own leading down to the public trail? So that people staying there, you know, that there's a trail that they could go and recreate on while they're staying there?
I
They mentioned it is.
I believe that there's
And I've never stayed there, so I don't know.
Yeah, I walked the backside. There's a couple interconnecting sidewalks that lead to the trail that they could utilize and
I wasn't necessarily thinking of a hard surface. I was thinking of a
Uh, just something soft.
Yeah, a soft surface.
Yeah, there is some interconnectivity existing. Um, the one thing that I did forget to point out that when you just asked that, it reminded me. Um, there is gonna be parking designated parking spaces on the, within that parcel on the northeast corner, that's gonna be for the trailhead.
Oh, very good.
So it'll
That first two spaces they're talking about?
It is, yeah. Yeah, so
How many did you say?
Oh, two.
That's something good.
Yeah. So there will be a couple spaces there that if somebody wanted to access the trail system from that location, they could. And we're able to have those two spaces transferred for the public use without impeding their, uh, required parking spaces that they need to meet for the Holiday Inn.
Great. Thanks for that question, Michael. Anyone else? All right, seven twenty-three, opening up to public comment. You have anyone in person or online wishing to speak? There's nobody in chamber and nobody online. Right, seven twenty. Close the public comment. If anyone has any other questions or comments, otherwise we entertain a motion. I'll go ahead and move to recommend approval of the Holiday Inn Minor Subdivision Sketch Plan with the conditions listed in the staff report and spoken during this meeting. We have a motion from Commissioner Gigi Reli.
I'll go with second motion.
Second from Commissioner Aragon. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Right. Thanks for all your work getting that all cleaned up. Potentially selling that again.
Yes.
Hopefully we'll find another
Yes.
person that is interested in that parcel.
We have talked to a couple.
Nice.
I thought Johnson on that property, right? To the north of the Holiday Inn.
We, we've owned it for a while. And then sold it to the Astera.
Okay.
And so they didn't do what they were supposed to do within the three-year timeframe. So, I think we ended up exercising our, uh, buyback. Provision before
I was just curious, because I know when they, back in the day, when they were, can't write a project that were building, but that's where they brought a lot of concrete debris and pretty much disposed of it on that lot and then buried it. So I'm just curious, I was like, huh.
We, we have been told that, that there's something going on over there, really.
Yeah, it's, it's a lot of destruction debris, you know, concrete. I don't, I don't get to ask, I'll tell them that there's a lot of voids and stuff.
Yeah.
And that's just remembering what I remember seeing them doing. It was, and I asked the question back then.
Yeah. Yeah, we, I've heard that before. Um, we haven't done any potholing to inform what is out there or how deep or, I mean, we've heard stories, but
It's there.
But yeah, we, we've definitely heard that there's, it's gonna be quite stuff buried out there.
Yes. Good luck as you start executing that one. All right, next we'll move on to the food truck ordinance. This is just an action item. I'm guessing it's an update for the moratorium, Nicole, a little more, few more parameters around our
Yes, so this we took in front of the, this one's kind of a mess. Uh, we are looking for feedback and we took it to the code committee. And it's more about a regulation surrounding, the Board of Trustees did recently, um, extend the moratorium so that we can get this completed, um, since we're coming up on that six-month mark from the moratorium. We took this to the code committee and within the mix of the feedback, we did not get it updated until I was putting the packet together on Friday. And so I quickly went through and changed what I think everything that needed to change. But this is very much so a working document. So if you catch something,
Okay.
let us know, because this was a very quick revision.
Okay.
Um, based off of what I remembered from the feedback. So, and Manager Man has, um, actually created it. So I went through and revamped it and revised it on Friday, trying to get it out for packets. So if there's something wrong, do not, do not hesitate to wave the flag and say something needs to change here.
Have you heard from any of the vendors on this?
We just had a conversation with one of the, we had a, a citizen come in that was a food, food truck representative. And she came into the one, um, I don't think it, well, no, she did come to a code committee meeting. And she gave her opinion on the struggles that she's had as a food vendor. And we've talked to two other of the food vendors. Um, we have not talked to the temporary vendors about the process because it's, there's not a lot that's changing for, we're just solidifying what the requirements are. Uh, the moratorium was more towards food trucks. Temporary, permanent, um, or indifferent. So when Manager Man had put this together initially, he was inputting verbiage that he was finding throughout other municipalities. That's part of what I did with the rewrite is kind of plugged in our verbiage because we already have some of this set in place. I still need to go through it a little bit more with a fine-tooth comb. But we changed, we changed some of the verbiage to meet vendors license because that's what we have existing. So instead of a special use license or a special use, um, events license, we call it a vendor's license. So just kind of plugging in some of that verbiage, um, and the definitions. So what we were kind of going back and forth on in code committee was the, some of the definitions, um, so the non-permanent location is a non-fixed site on private property where a mobile food vendor is authorized to operate on a periodic basis, not to exceed three consecutive days. And we've tried to put all of this into the realm of what do we have currently existing in town? This one is more along the lines of like, um, on the hook fish and chips. They come once a month. So they come twelve times a year. They come once a month. They set up in the back parking lot between the, between town hall and the town center. And they're open for a couple of hours in the evening. So they've been coming for years. And so we wanna make sure that we're not excluding those kind of vendors from coming in. Um, because they do bring something different and a little bit of a variety and it's kind of specialty. They come in once a month and like, if you, I don't know if you've ever seen the line, but it is long to, um, to get anything from there. So that's where the non-permanent location comes in, where it's somewhat consistent and steady. And it's not affiliated with an event, but it's not a permanent location either.
So would like an example of that be the food truck that's at the brew zone right now?
No. So
So that would not be?
That would not be.
Okay.
No, because they went through a site plan and
Part of it is just have that and it's fine and it's
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. Yeah. So we currently, and I can give you a quick, um, background of what we do have. We have the Lyons Tacos. That's a pre-existing non-conforming use because they did not go through a site plan, but they were there before the site plan um, requirement was established. And then we have the Taqueria Garcia, which is across the street on that same, on Ninth Street roundabout. They are also a pre-existing non-conforming use because they were there prior to the site plan requirement. And then we have the Jalisco Food Truck that is down on South Seventh Street. And they
Sorry, what? They were after, right? That we had
They were after. So they not only had to do a site plan review, but they had to do a special use permit because restaurants are not allowed in the zone district. Or they're, they're, it's not that they're not allowed, they're just not a use by right. It's a special use to allow a restaurant in that zone district. So they went through a special use that was approved by the Board of Trustees and a site plan review that was approved by the planning commission. And so they had a couple different elements that they had to prove why that is the best location for what they're trying to accomplish. The other two, um, that I already mentioned are on somebody else's property. The Jalisco Food Truck is on their own property. They own the land that their food truck is sitting on currently. So then we have that. And then we have Fernie's Tacos that is also on somebody else's property. And he went through a site plan review. And then we have Brew Zone that went through a site plan review. And that food truck is part of like a requirement for uh, liquor licensing because he's selling liquor. And so that one was a little bit more um, of a requirement. He can bring food in, but he also wanted the approval for a food truck that he could just serve food there and not have to cater food in. So he uses his food truck seasonally typically, or is what he proposed. I don't wanna say typically because he's hasn't quite been through a full, a full, uh, year to know what he's gonna use or not use and when. So he is approved to have it and it's, um, approved to be permanent. He does have approval that he can bring different food trucks in for a variety. But that was all part of his, um, approval process.
And so that like three-day stipulation that we were talking about like doesn't apply to his property because he's got
He has all the Garfield County approvals and the town site plan approval. So he's allowed to be there three consecutive days, but doesn't have to be open three consecutive days. He can move it and then bring it back if somebody else comes in. But anybody that comes in has to go through, they have to have the same Garfield County licensing per his approval through the town. And if they're there for more than three consecutive days, then they become the permanent one and they're not allowed to be there for more than three consecutive days. His is. But he can bring somebody temporary in and they can be there for two days and then they can leave and then he can bring his back. So it just creates a little bit of a variety. And then it's the same thing with Rosalinda. They have, they went through a site plan review. They are allowed to have their food truck there. Uh, the one that they have currently is the Ello's Eatery. Same licensing, have to go through the Garfield County approval. Their food truck is allowed to alternate. And whatever food truck comes, they can stay for more than three consecutive days because they have the site plan approval that was specific to say it can be varying food trucks. So it's, it's very specific, like the site plan approval is, everybody has different requirements. The Jalisco is required to, per their special use, attach onto water and sewer and have permanent structures. They can't have these little pop-up structures. And so we've, the reason why we put the moratorium is because we've had like food trucks gone rogue, um, in our town. And there's pop-up structures and there are signs everywhere. And so we have letters out to everybody for code compliance. And the ones that did not go through a site plan review have to follow the municipal code. The ones that did go through site plan review are not allowed to deviate from their site plan review. And so there's restrictions around, everybody has a different set of restrictions that they're following. Um,
Nicole, I have a question.
Yes.
That, you know, I think specific to this ordinance. Who is approved to have the flags and the signage?
Nobody.
Okay.
Nobody has been approved.
That needs to be put in here that that's not allowed because they're out there.
So, yeah, so that'll be, that's part of the sign code.
Okay.
And so that was part of the letter that everybody got was you have to apply for signs. Nobody's, nobody's had a sign application. And so that's, that's part of the, you know, everybody's kind of gone rogue. There's pop-up structures that don't meet wind and snow load. There's signs galore all over the place
Yeah.
that are popping up. Um, so that's what we're trying to, we're working with our existing food trucks that come into compliance with all of that. And then making sure that part of any new approvals that take place that is specified as a condition of approval that they have to go through a sign
Except
application for any signs that are put up and what do those look like? And the sign code is on the, on my list of code rewrites, but it's not probably, it's definitely not something that's gonna happen this year. So just kind of making sure that we bring everybody back into compliance with where they should be based off of all of their approvals. Um, but signs is one of them. Yeah.
In light of that question, are you suggesting that that's something that the, so, the the subcommittee would have to look at the sign code revisions?
Absolutely. Yeah. That'll be a big code revision. Our sign code is very dated. Um, I mean, it, if ever, it's in, like, pretty much every business downtown is in violation of the sign code right now. So so there's a lot. I mean, even our sign code doesn't allow for any neon signs. So anybody that has an open sign that lights up is technically, is the other technically out of compliance with our code. So then it's looking at the sign code and trying to figure out what is realistic because you know, some of those things, like when I drive by somewhere, if I don't see a lit open sign, I typically don't stop because I'm like, oh, they're probably already closed. Even if the lights are on, they're probably just cleaning up. So we're, we'll have to circle back around to best practices and what that looks like and what other municipalities do and
Yeah.
and what our own experience is.
Well, yeah, and I certainly hope that it's not, well, it's already open to can of worms, I guess. But the idea that like we can't really go after the food trucks for sign code violations. If like the brick and mortar stores like also have sign code violations. Like we can't really like cherry pick the food trucks.
No, no, it's the outside, the, the food trucks having the sign code violations are more health and safety because the brick and mortars are like typically interior.
Yeah.
And you can just see it from the road, but some of the flags and some of the, um, like there's ones that have grommets that are torn apart that is flapped and, I mean, it's a lot of, they're all adjacent to Highway Six. So if something goes flying out onto Highway Six, that's an issue.
Yeah.
Some of the open signs are up twenty-four hours a day, uh, seven days a week.
Yes. Yeah. So, so making sure, cause that's the other thing is, um, you know, when we went through Fernie's approvals, he did have, he stated that he was gonna have the ribbon lighting and the, and there was a timeframe that it's okay, that has to be turned off because it's it's flashy and nice if you're trying to draw attention. But we're also on Highway Six and we're not looking to have like flashy neon lights distracting drivers on Highway Six. And so there's, you know, there's a lot that goes into the approvals and making sure that we're we're looking at all of that. I actually think that's something that Commissioner Aragon had brought up at the time of, um, what, do we want the flashing signs on Highway Six? That are like outlining the whole thing. So, you know, those are things that we, we look at at the time of site plan review.
So then it will be, well, they're Christmas lights. They leave them up.
Yeah.
All year long.
Yes. Yeah. So
Look out for that one.
So, yeah, so looking, looking at all that, um, you know, there's a lot of elements that'll all be determined. So let me get back to, so the permanent location is the fixed location. That's where they can stay open year-round. Um, we define private property and public property because people can't just pop up a food truck at the park on a public right-of-way and say that, you know, they just want it open for the day. Um, and then what's constituted as private property, because we have had people come and ask us about doing a block party and having a food truck parked in their driveway that would serve the, you know, their block as they're doing their block party. And we don't wanna impede those kind of community, we're trying to be community oriented and make sure that we have outlets for events such as that. And, um, and providing that space. So just making sure that we're kind of defining things the best that we can. And then I had changed, um, E to be a vendor's license, which is short-term. Um, it, we had talked about on the code committee meeting that ten events or less per year. It, I mean, that's kind of a stretch. We were, we went back and forth whether or not we even need to put a number to that. But then it was okay, we need a number to that because what's gonna define if they're doing, if they're saying that there's an event every single weekend and they're opening on? what's gonna define if they're doing, if they're saying that there's an event every single weekend and they're opening on uh on a private parcel and they're like, well, I mean, they could come up with a name for an event every single weekend and have, you know.
So is on the hook impacted by that if they typically come here on a monthly basis and they're typically here twelve times? Are they beholden to that?
And so that's, they wouldn't, they actually get a business license. So they're no longer a vendor at an event. That's, that comes back to that first initial definition of non-permanent. And so that's where we tried to cover like the three different categories and making sure that we, anybody, anything that we've experienced up to this point. We're trying to cover all of the existing food trucks plus some. So that's where we came up with the three different definitions and three different categories. Um, the license requirements are everything that we already require. It's um business license, vendor's license. Uh, Garfield County Public Health Department license. Um, licenses must be displayed every year. The Board of Trustees comes up with their fee schedule and so the fees will be based off of that annually. And then we get into location and zoning and this is where it was, it was a little bit more hairy and I, I need to reread through this a couple of times and we can go through it tonight for feedback. So in non-residential zone districts, including but not limited to commercial, industrial, mixed-use zones. With a, so this is where they're allowed um with approval. They would have to have a valid vendors or vendors license or business license with the approval for the permanent location. Public parks or town-sponsored events would be valid with a vendor's license and so that's more event-related. And then um private property with a valid vendors or business license that would cover the, even the um on the hook. They're on technically private property that's owned by the town. Um, or like they're in the town parking lot. So they would be able to still open there or if they found another space on Main Street, they could still go into that space and be open once a month for twelve months out of the.
They moved down to uh this one that the roundabout, Lions, could they move down Lions like the, the melon truck does?
So not another food truck. Um, that gets, so when we go down to E, there's the prohibited locations. And so it cannot be within a one hundred and fifty feet of an existing, a brick and mortar restaurant. Oh, you know what? We didn't, we just put brick and mortar because we talked about if we were wanting to do a food court. So if we were ever able to gain the space, which would be ideal instead of having the food trucks sporadic everywhere. If we were able to gain a space that was large enough that we would want, we didn't wanna prohibit the food trucks from being with other food trucks. Just so that we could do a food court. Um, so technically they could, but they would have to go through a site plan review at that point. And then they would have to prove parking and the site plan review is to prove parking um and access and, you know, all of that jazz. So they would have to go through that process. Um, but what came out of the code committee really is, I keep saying site plan, but the application for a permanent food truck, the code committee actually wanted to take it a step further and say it's not just a site plan review that comes in front of the Planning Commission only. It actually is gonna be a special use permit across all zone districts for a permanent location. And so that, I mean, it's, it's another hoop to jump through, but it's it's a process that it will help the town ensure that what is coming into town is what is wanted and needed at town. And so we can't put regulations around the type of food. So we can't say there's no more taco trucks allowed in town. But if they come and present everything that they present and it doesn't feel like it aligns with what the town needs, then the Board of Trustees, the Planning Commission would be a recommending body and the Board of Trustees would be a final decision maker and determine if that's what's needed in the town. At the location and if they have the means to provide what's needed as far as parking and access and utilities and I think the consensus was hearing from some of the brick and mortar restaurants and some of the citizens, there was concern that the town was making it too easy to run a food truck. Making it harder for the brick and mortars to stay operational because the food trucks um costs less and and the food truck representative that came and spoke on the behalf of food trucks was a little torn with that statement. Um, she said, you know, it's, it is cheaper. But in a lot of aspects, it's also harder because you typically do have to um haul water back and forth and you have to dispose of gray water and you have to have the, you have to prove that you're doing all these things to the county and you do uh in a brick and mortar as well, just cost less because you're typically tied on to town utilities. So you may have a grease trap, but you're not hauling, you're not paying somebody to come haul it back and forth. And you have running water, you're not paying for a water truck to come and fill you up um every so often. So there's, there's just some different requirements, but that's the biggest one that changed from code committee to now that I hope I caught everything. Um, within this is the requirement for everything to be a special use. And part of the special use would be a site plan, um, site plan review. So they would coincide and, and the uh Board of Trustees would be the final decision maker. Some of the things that we put on there that would be determined would be the operating hours of um, or the operating plan, including hours of operation. The, the disposal of uh gray water and making sure that they're keeping those monthly records. And those are the things that we follow up on. If it was a condition of approval at the time of site plan, we follow up especially at the time of business license. They have to provide us all of their logs and all of their records and we verify that everything is what it's supposed to be. Um, there's lighting plans, signage plans. Um, so signage plan isn't here. Just the requirements of the signage is gonna be in the sign code. And then we do have accessory structures and and those requirements um that it has to be, it has to meet the municipal code fully. Bless you. That gives a little bit of flexibility for us to look at it, but a lot of these pop-up tents don't meet wind and snow load. And so if we had a good gust of wind come through, that took one of those structures, it would, for the, what we have existing for the most part, um, with the exception of Reslenda, it would blow that structure potentially right into oncoming traffic on Highway six. So wind and snow load is something that's adopted in our building code within uh the Silt Municipal Code. So just making sure that that solidifies in there that they have to meet those requirements. Um, even for a temporary structure and in the building code speaks to temporary structures as well. Um, it, we also went into the review process of what that would look like and that they would have to meet health and fire codes. Um, site plan development standards. Just like within the last application that we had talked about for the Veterans Coalition, we are a dark sky community that isn't our municipal code. So all lighting should be downcast lighting. So it's just making sure that we look at those kinda things and that there's not strobe lighting method um during the evening adjacent to Highway six. And then approval conditions, special use, um permit term and renewal. That is one thing that was talked about at the code. I apologize, I'm still getting over the pneumonia. My throat gets dried out um really easily. But it's a one-year approval. So if like what we have right now, a lot of non-compliance, right now we're fighting it with code enforcement. Um with the one-year approval, they have to come back in front of the board and ask for, um, and it would uh they would have to come in front of the commission and then the board to ask for a renewal, at which point the board can say you're not compliant on any of this stuff. So it just adds another layer of accountability to make sure that, that everybody's following what they need to follow. And if they don't, then there's somebody out there that's gonna be waiting on the list that does wanna follow it. Um, there is generic uh operational standards. And hours of operation. Um, the, at the code committee, it was originally seven. But we have food trucks that open at six and provide breakfast burritos to people on there. I don't think we wanna limit that. Um.
You said it opened earlier.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, so I moved it from seven to six on Friday. I didn't get to talk to anybody else about it. Uh, but that's why we're here is to, to have feedback if it needs to change. Um, we do have, we've had some issues with uh the propane tanks, our code and the fire code is pretty restrictive on the capacity that you're allowed to have. And within the town, the code has been pretty um specific that nothing more than um a hundred and twenty gallons is allowed, a typical one, I think it's five gallons um that you would hook to a gas grill. Anything over one hundred and twenty, even though it might be easier, it also causes additional potential dangers. Um, it makes a bigger boom if something were to happen. And so making sure that that's, and, and that's been a condition of approval on all of our current site plans for food trucks. But making sure that it's written into code that that's something just in case somebody's processing one and, and they, they're trying to remember what all needs to be included. We're just trying to solidify it. And then that is, we put that inspections will take place and that violations um would default to the one point one two. And then Title seventeen thirteen, which is our schedule of uses, would just include that everything needed to be a special use. I'm trying to see in here, we had talked about limiting the number of food trucks. I, I was, this is, this is what we were talking about at the last code committee meeting that I got up and walked away from to set up the PNZ meeting. Um. So I did not have notes on all of the food truck related items. Michael, do you remember?
There already gonna be. We have currently six or seven.
So we have one, two, three, four, five, six that have gone through a site plan review, seven with the on-the-hook temporary.
Well, I think that was the number, seven.
It, cause we had talked about, like I was, I was setting up the Zoom meeting and figuring out, but I vaguely was like overhearing, we had talked about seven food trucks and then we had talked about tying to a population.
Said that the number was the same as what's existing now.
Okay. So I, so the two things that I remember was either the number that's existing, we set it at seven or we tie it to the population, like what we did with.
We didn't do that.
We didn't do that, okay. So feedback from the commission on number of food trucks and that um, that restriction would also be beneficial because that needs to be added into this ordinance, cause I don't see it.
Yeah, that was gonna be one of my questions is why is there not a restriction in the ordinance? And I would say no more than seven.
Okay.
Sure. I would wonder, um, I think there can be a restriction, but I think it should be to the permanent ones only. Um, say here and say that on the hook is the only temporary one that comes in, they're number seven. Now nobody else ever gets to come in, even at a temporary point. I don't think that's quite right. Um. Either that or we've gotta cut it where it's five permanents and two temporaries. Um, how that works because everyone's already here. Uh, that, that gets a little iffy in my mind. I guess I, I, I'm pretty much hearing if we're restricting it, we'll never see a different food truck here ever again.
Or less one goes out of business.
And less one goes out of business, yeah.
Sells at those kind of things come.
I thought we had more than that because I knew when you had your events, is that one of the food trucks that leaves their site here? Goes to the events, the concerts?
No, no. So that's, that's a different one. Um, so that's the event vendors or the event food trucks would not be part of the restriction because they're um they're only for events, which that's the ten per year, correct? That's the ten per year. Yes, so when, when we're looking at it, cause we had talked about kinda splitting it up too and making sure that there was a restriction on permanent and then temporary um gets a little bit hairy because if somebody, if the Mayans moved out and somebody wanted to come, but they didn't wanna go through the process of a site plan review and they um knew that they couldn't prove the access and parking or whatever, whatever their concern was. Um, they could come in for three days, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and then leave and then come back the next week, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and then leave and then come back the next, like they could do that all year long and
Never be under the.
And never have to follow the re, the other restrictions that somebody that just didn't leave um had to follow. And so it was trying to figure out how to put the safeguards in there to protect the people that wanna stay here year-round while also setting restrictions that are fair to the brick and mortar businesses. And like it's, it's all a juggling act to make sure that we're being as fair and equal to everybody as possible without.
Yeah, and it's difficult to do that, especially this, I mean, food trucks should always be temporary unless, I forgot what a food truck was about, but um.
The ones on.
If they wanted to be permanent, why don't they build a brick and mortar? That's, which is why I, I understand the other brick and mortars complaints about it being too easy. Um, I certainly side with that comment and agree with that. Uh, I think the, these food trucks are by design to be temporary. So it's it's odd that we're struggling to find a way to control them setting up and just never leaving. Cause at this point, the ones that are here, they are gonna fight tooth and nail and we say, well, they have to go out of business. Well, that's gonna be hard for them to happen in my mind. It doesn't take a lot to operate the food truck. Um, you get a gauge on what business is coming in, you only cook so much food. I, it's, I don't see them going out of business, especially when they're permanent, they're not moving anything. It's it wouldn't take a, much of a safety net bank account for them to stay open for a very long time with no customers. Um, that's just my two cents, my look on it. Um. This whole idea of permanent food trucks seems odd to me. I'm probably odd one out on that, but um, I definitely think it should be split up to some point because I, in my mind, I see food trucks should be temporary. And we shouldn't cap this at what we have now because the ones that are here are never even here. And that'll never change. We'll always have food trucks all downtown. That's, that's my concern.
Thanks.
I thought I had an answer.
Yeah.
So I don't have a solution. I'm just saying, I, I, I worry about that.
I think this is just a, just the action item is um more related to like feedback on the resolution and then this will go to the board. So I think Nicole's intent is really just to hear our feedback.
Yeah.
What's on that? I um, I wanted to start off by thanking the folks on the code committee for all the work that you guys have put into this. This is hard-won text language to be dealing with. Um, so thank you, guys. I'm curious, was there a um, did most of the committee feel like there needed to be a cap on the number of food trucks that we had?
Yes.
Okay. I guess, yeah, by, I guess on first blush, uh, but then hearing your comments, I was like, well, why wouldn't we just let the market decide how many food trucks the town needs, right? Like.
Well, then you'd have ten or eleven or twelve.
Very well ended, though, why you?
Hey, if there was some Indian food, some Vietnamese, some Ban Lee sandwiches here, I am all about that. I, so like, I think, well, you know, we all think immediately like, oh, there's gonna be ten taco trucks or something, but to your point about really not limiting the type of cuisine that it is, um. Yeah, I just, I always kinda go back to the multitude of people who work on this before we see it and the culmination of, you know, the work that's been put into it right now is what we're seeing in front of us for the most part with a few little
Yes.
um tweaks given here or there. So overall, I, I definitely support um the language that's used within the um, within the document right now. Um, yeah, like that it starts at six AM. Um, didn't really have, don't really have any major objections to anything that you guys have presented to us tonight.
Didn't you question before, didn't you say that there were two or three applicants that wanted to be in while we're under the moratorium?
Correct. Yeah, we've had four different, uh, yeah, four. There, there was an additional one. Yeah, four, there's, there was an additional one. Come in and ask to um. Do a food truck.
Yeah.
And three of them were taco trucks and then one of them was a hot dog stand, like a hot dog truck.
Gonna be so.
My own uh. So there's definitely people still wanting to come in.
Okay, that think that there is not already, but that to think that the business is viable.
I don't understand why. People would think another taco truck is a good idea to have here, like.
It it the market is very saturated.
Yeah, like someone's not doing their market research.
And didn't you say rifle has limited four?
They do, yeah, rifle is limited, Newcastle doesn't allow any permanent food trucks. They actually did allow, because of the liquor licensing requirement, they did allow one food truck to permanently be located at.
Article.
Yeah, the, what is it called, the, it's the new. Yeah, valley burn, yeah. Yeah, and that was because of the liquor licensing requirements, yeah.
Hey, Nicole, we have a question on this, I mean, with these permanent ones and everything like that, the biggest thing that I really do see a lot of is. It's like dust mitigation or anything like this, maintenance and upkeep of the drives and all that good stuff, I mean, it seems like. You know, especially as dry as it's been this year, you know, you start getting in situations and and there really is nobody maintaining or upkeep on them. You know, that people drive in and I mean, it's just what it is, is what it is, and then eventually it just, it's it's pretty.
Yes.
Yeah, and it seemed like, you know, we'd have something in place also where, you know, that's kind of a, a being operational. You know, you need to maintain that service or whatever to make sure that, you know. It's where everybody's not suffering as far as I I go, I like Riz Linda, go out there, but you know, when it starts belonging, it's freaking just a. It's like, wow, really? Yeah, it just, it don't want me to be honest with you, it just don't seem like, you know, that's one of the last things they're worried about, you know, it's a bit of a food supplier vendor, whatever. But um.
Yeah.
You know, that'd be part of something that I would like to see implemented to or.
Yeah, so dust mitigation and. Um like property maintenance.
Yeah, I I mean, something like that, yes, I mean. Cuz I know there's means and methods, you know. Mag chloride a lot of times that they use on the gravels to to keep the dust down and it lasts for quite a while, but there's a number of things they can do, but. Not doing nothing, just really don't. It's not a good answer.
Yeah, so I think we can add something like that to the requirements where it's like disposal of gray water and um. The size of propane tanks and add something like that there so that it's on the checklist within the ordinance. And then do you think that adding the requirement for annual renewal will help? With that accountability and making sure that.
I think so, I mean, you have to make sure you have to account to to do that additional work, I mean, it's an additional fee and that you should. Be willing to, I mean, brick and mortars, they have to, you know, you gotta pay for service, you got all that other good stuff, so I mean.
Yeah, and and we would be, we would request from the trustees to have it, not the whole fee. That the renewal fee would be less, so like currently it's five hundred dollars for a special use to renew, it might be half of that. So, I mean, it's still an expense, but.
Yeah, I don't.
It's like the cost of doing business.
Do you think any of them have grounds for essentially asking for grandfathered cuz you've already been approved and we're just going to renew now? And it's not a new app- application?
Yes.
That's my worries, we're 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 coming to this great list, we're also limiting anything new coming in. But then anyone who's here is just getting a renewal and they don't necessarily have to conform to the new codes because they're already in and grandfathered.
Correct, so every existing food truck with the exception of Riz Linda, that was a two year approval. Every other food truck is either grandfathered in or it was not a condition of approval that they had to come back to renew. And so what we have with those food trucks is. They, if they're not able to stay compliant with their site plan review or their special use. Then we can bring them in for a breach and non-compliance of their approval, at which point. It would open the doors again to say, okay, you're in breach, you're gonna have an annual renewal now. And so like we have some fail safes, but you're right, it's not, what we're putting in place from this point forward. Is a much better option than somebody having to be in breach and us trying to potentially resend an approval.
Right, and I'm not really familiar with any of the site plans and I don't know. How, what stipulations were and what they were asked to follow in comparison to the new code. There's, I guess, some of that in my mind, I'm wondering if this is. Especially if we're capping and no one else is coming in, does how, yeah, what what does this accomplish, um? I mean, don't worry, let's do it because someday something's gonna leave, someone else is gonna come in hopefully.
Yeah.
Uh and and this will be here, it'll be ready, so I don't I don't know. Anyone feel like their work is not valued or appreciated or or needed in that regard, but I I fear a lot of this is just. I guess, planning for the future.
It's brain work to be proactive rather than reactive like we have been. Yeah. It's, it's tough and and part of this with, once we limit uh. The amount, we just wanna make sure that we're setting, setting things up in a way that's gonna be successful because there. I mean, you never know, somebody may. May decide that they're ready to leave and then like Ferney, he left and then came back and was like, actually, no, I need to operate and spilt. But they love me and so I'm going back there. So and then he had to find a different location and jump through hoops that he hadn't gone through cuz he was the pre-existing non-conforming. So, yeah.
Any other comments for Nicole before we wrap this up? I have a few questions, if that's okay, um I saw parking noted in there a couple of times, is traffic analysis also kind of included in the site reviews for permanent locations?
No, yes and no, it depends on what it is. So currently, the smaller restaurants that we have wouldn't trigger um a traffic analysis. Unless CDOP was like, hey, hold on, this is gonna generate too much traffic.
Yeah, just thinking about like this that we have clustered right on the roundabout, just like seems like that would be a consideration in my mind, so.
Yeah, CDOP typically only, what typically triggers the traffic analysis are large, large commercial developments. Or residential, residential more than anything, so the two pre-existing non-conforming. Would not have. In my opinion, would not have gotten a site plan approval based off of the lack of access and parking. But they were existing before and I think they know that if they move, they're not coming back to that location, so they're sticking around.
Uh this is kind of a dry question, uh you said there's some that are on lots with like kind of existing buildings on there. And then the mobile food truck attached, does that count? Do the mobile vendors count against like allowable lot coverage? And like stormata runoff and all that?
Yes, yes.
Okay, yeah. Um and then, yeah, I don't know, I keep spinning wheels around like the ten events per year thing. It just kind of feels, uh I guess I just don't know how it's gonna pan out, it feels like an arbitrary number to me, I'm like curious on. Um if that will feel restrictive to folks who are temporary, which I would support bringing in a diversity of more temporary people coming through. I'm curious if we just maybe wanna consider, um. I don't know, I guess where we will land on that and maybe that's with time and then it can be amended down the line, um but maybe if there's like. Could be potentially like a tiered system where like. You know, there's maybe a ten event limit and then if you want to do more than that, maybe there's like a tier two with an increased fee that lets you do like up to twenty or something, I. Yeah, it just, it was a number that grabbed me, um that I had some questions about, so. I think that's all of my little things. And then, yeah, I just feel like the aesthetics are just such a concern when it comes down to it, I feel like that's where a lot of our critiques. Kind of stem from for like the town character, we talk about in our comprehensive plan, how we, what we want our town character and aesthetic to be like. And so um I think having those points in there are important and maybe just an additional one. It sounds like you're addressing the excessive signage clutter, but maybe also just like a trucks need to be well maintained. Kind of thing and not have like any visible damage or stuff like that. You got any other suggestion there? Thank you.
Only had one more quick one, um the hours of operation, did we feel we needed to throw that in there? Right, or or not, and not let the market decide? Are we worried about that causing issues if they're open till midnight? I mean, we don't really have a bar here in town, but I mean, the brew zone gets out, but they have their own food truck. I just, I'm just thinking, you know, there's plenty of places where food trucks are open till midnight, two AM. I'm not saying we need to do that, I'm just asking the question, if we've, what, why did we feel we had to put any cap on it at all instead of letting the market dictate?
I guess I don't really remember the discussion that well, I. I I I I know we talked about opening about in the morning, but uh. We didn't see that there's a problem with it, none of them are staying open to midnight.
Sure, yeah, well, and and that, because markets dictated, it's just, I guess, where I'd rather see the. Discussions go.
Going into the fall and winter, they're closing at six, seven o'clock.
Well, and I think, I mean, I can't speak to why manager man put those particular timeframes in there initially. My assumption would be that he was probably trying to align with the noise ordinance. So, makes sense, that that would be, I mean, that would have been why I put it in there, I I'm assuming that that's probably what his.
How is it seven o'clock?
Ten.
Ten. It could go lower in winter.
Sorry, in the morning or the evening?
In the evening.
In the evening. Tens appropriate.
I mean, uh. What's the piece of one over there, Bury Mountain, they close at eight.
Yeah, we typically have, I mean, you can brew zone, he he put himself to a ten o'clock.
Mine's playing, they close at nine, I believe.
Nine thirty.
Nine thirty.
That's fine, if that's the way you wanna go, I I guess I just question the need to put anything.
Yeah, well, and we'll talk about it. Yeah, the comments.
Especially considering everyone's kind of shutting themselves down anyways, I get them, I don't know why we need to make it a code.
Well, and I I see where you're coming from because that's typically what we determine at site plan. Or a special use is they present to us their operating hours and their operating plan. And we determine if that's viable or not. I don't know.
I had to mention, if nobody ever opens up till six AM, I'm never getting breakfast time, so.
Got Maverick.
Maverick's open that early.
Thanks, Director Santino, appreciate that, let us uh let us know where this goes from here, any updates that you have once?
Will do.
Have a chance to clean that up a little bit. Last few agenda items, next is the planner's report, uh did everyone have a chance to take a look at that last page of the packet? Have any questions for Nicole?
I have a question, um with the code review committee. I, not that all of what is being presented to us is not important because it all is. I'm thinking, how are bigger picture code issues being prioritized? Primarily code that could. Positively influence our economic development and our sales tax base, like. Are those codes being risen to the top to be revised, reviewed, pushed forward? Not that food truck ordinances and code is not important, but. I'm thinking like. How do we make it easier for folks to do business here, bring a business here? Generate more sales tax revenue, so. One way of doing that is, can we prioritize the code to where we are hitting those pieces? First.
So we did the housing needs assessment. And we got some feedback from that, but before we do title sixteen, and we actually met about title sixteen today. Um which is all of our subdivision. It's all land use, yeah.
Okay.
So in the land use process is like, it's this, it's site plans, it's special use, it's annexations, it's zoning. Um but title sixteen and seventeen are gonna be huge code rewrites. And we're not gonna piecemeal it, so when we do it, it's gonna be the entirety of the um. Of the. Ordinance, and so when we're looking at that, we're gonna have to hire somebody to come in. And either hire somebody to come in and do it, contract somebody or hire another employee. And so those are big code rewrites and we're gonna start looking at that. As soon as we're done with the branding exercise, so right now we're in the middle of a branding exercise and. Once we figure out what still wants to be when they grow up, then we will start conforming. The subdivision code and zoning code around that.
Okay.
Because we need to know what we want to bring into town and we can't rewrite the code until we better understand what that looks like. Do we want buildings that are gonna be forty-five, fifty feet tall? Do we wanna keep it smaller, single family developments, do we want larger commercial developments, do we want? And so we need to better hone in on what we want before we just start changing code to meet it.
Sure.
So it is, it is all in progress, but it's gonna be a multi-step process. To make sure, so the ones that we're working on now, I don't wanna say it's low hanging fruit because it is very important, but it's the smaller ones that we can get. In and out and through and checked off the list while we're going through the process to conquer the bigger ones. So it, in a nutshell, yes, we are working on it, it's just not gonna be something that's gonna come to you immediately.
On it, yeah.
Rest your children comments?
Anybody that wants to come to those meetings, welcome.
They're a lot of fun.
Commissioner Ayers, any last comments?
No more comments.
Mr. Gisarelli, all clear.
And I did wanna point out one more thing, um the September second P and Z meeting. We will have a mandatory ethics training, so I know we have new P and Z members. Our attorney will come and uh but everybody needs to be present for that, so I will let Justin know as well. So it'll be a good ethics training, he's really great at um at that.
We don't have a second meeting this month.
We do not, no.
Been seeing a lot of you all lately.
I know.
Um will that ethics training be like an hour before the regular meeting starts?
No, it'll be part of a regular meeting.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we're gonna carve out time on the agenda.
Okay.
Yeah, it would's beneficial to have it as part of a public meeting, okay, so that.
Do you know what's happening, what other applications do we have for that meeting?
It looks like the.
That'll take some time.
Mm-hmm, I think that might not yet.
For now, right now, that's what's embedded to be on there.
Very good.
Yeah.
As always, thanks for all your work that you're doing.
Yes, yeah. Big concert coming up, make sure you come. August twenty eighth, it's a Thursday. Uh it'll be our big one, it's gonna be the kickoff to Labor Day weekend, yeah, so. Yep.
I'll be there.
Calendar, it'll be a really fun event.
Was that Hay Day?
Um Hay Day is the twenty-third, this is the hairband that's on.
Oh, right.
Yeah, also still Hay Days on the twenty-third, which I know is not accounted for.
It is, yeah, yeah.
Who will adjourn?
I second that.
Righty, thanks, guys.
Yeah.
Won't be next month. Interesting, this gets stuff in there.